Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome you to the July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five City of Springfield License Commission Meeting. I'd like to start calling the meeting to order at five thirty P M. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the Springfield Board License Commissioners Hearing Held on Wednesday, July ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Did all commissioners have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any corrections?
No.
Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the Springfield Board License Commissioners Hearing Held on Wednesday, July ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cade?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
I'm going to abstain due to my absence and to my fellow commissioners, I do apologize for that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a petition for transfer of wine and malt beverages package store license from Ella Cave Realty LLC DBA Quick Mart to Five Star Six O Three Wobraham, Inc., DBA Quick Mart, located at six oh three Wobraham Road. Mia Zubair Salim, manager of record.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Neil Phillips. I represent the petitioner. And we're seeking approval of the transfer of beer and wine license or malt license to this new corporation, which is part of an entity that's buying the business. The gas station encompasses the Quick Mart. And this gentleman hopes to be south part of the Quick Mart to continue the service of beer and wine that is there now.
Okay. And this gentleman is who you said again, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, you want to identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Mia Zubair Salim.
Okay.
He's been in the industry for about seven years.
Seven years, yes.
Seven years. As a manager of record?
As a manager of record anywhere, no, no, just as an employee in that industry.
Yes.
So you don't have any experience being a manager of record?
No.
No.
No. Okay. Are you tip certified?
No, not yet, not yet. But he will be if you allow this license transfer.
Okay. Okay, how many other people will be selling alcohol?
Two additional clerks, one to two.
Yeah.
Are they tip certified?
They will be. Yeah.
But no one, no one is tip certified right now?
One is.
Okay.
His brother will be assisting him who's here also.
Yeah.
Right here, if you want to say hello on the picture, sir. We have a tight screen here. Sorry about that.
Hi, how you doing? Good afternoon, everybody. So my name is Mohamed Salim. I'm one of the, actually, already have the beer wine business in Springfield. So actually, we've been working together. So he's been helping me most of them, like almost seven years now. So he already knows. So he's first time buying this business by his own. So that is all about. If any question, please.
What was your other license, sir? You want to identify that address, please?
Yeah, we have Liberty Gas Springfield.
Liberty Gas?
Working.
Okay.
And that's been going for how long, ten years?
Nine years.
Nice, okay.
Okay. Okay. So, um, and where do you live, sir? And now, Mr. Salim?
One eighty-eight Clearwater Circle, Lolo, Mass.
In where, Mass? I'm sorry?
Lolo.
Lolo, Mass? Okay. Okay. Um, any, any questions from the commissioners?
I see that, yeah.
Uh, no.
No, she's, no question, no.
I have a couple more questions. What are going to be the hours of business?
The hours of business for the gas is six to eleven, but eight, eight to eleven on the
Alcohol, alcohol timing.
Okay.
Which is consistent with what's happening right now there, correct?
Yes, only Sunday.
Sunday ten, starting at ten.
Ten to eleven, that's the hours.
And that'll be your situation, so, yes.
Okay. And, um, how many hours would you say you will be spending there?
Eight hours.
Every day?
Approximately, yeah.
Eight hours every day.
Eight hours every day? Okay.
Minimum.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
No.
No? Okay, John?
No, 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 no.
No? Okay. Um, so, Mr. Salim, do you, do you understand that the importance of being tip certified?
Yes.
Okay, so we need you to get that tip certification as soon as possible.
Okay.
Um, and all your employees should also be, or they have to be tip certified as well. Um, you do have to keep those tip certification readily available in case that the police or any compliant officers comes in and requests to see them, they should be on the premises.
Okay.
Okay? Um, you, you know, you, you do understand that it will be your responsibility if anything happens, whether is, you know, alcohol that was sold to someone underage, or, you know, and anything that happens that you will be responsible and you will have to answer to this board.
Okay.
Do you accept that responsibility? You do? Okay. Um, then I am going to make a motion to approve the petition for transfer of wine and malt beverages package store license from Ella Cave Realty LLC DBA Quick Mart to Five Star Six O Three Wobraham, Inc., DBA Quick Mart, located at six oh three Wobraham Road. Mia Zubair Salim, manager of record, pending that the license office receives a copy of the tip certification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cade?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Okay, thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Next item is a petition for transfer of all alcoholic beverages package store license from Ian Corp, DBA Johnny Mac Liquor, to Nax Radhi Krishna, Inc., DBA Johnny Mac Liquor, located at nineteen forty-nine Wobraham Road. Emil Patel, manager of record.
Ms. Chairman, this is Josh Levine from Levine Law in East Long Meadow, representing Nash Radhi Krishna Incorporated.
Okay, how are you?
I'm doing fine. Nice to see you again. Thank you all for having me. As I mentioned, I'm representing a Nax Radhi Krishna. They're planning on purchasing Johnny Mac Liquors in nineteen forty-nine Wobraham Road in Springfield. Mr. Emil Patel is with me tonight. He will be the manager of record. He is currently the manager of record and of another store in West Springfield. And totally has over ten years of retail managerial experience. And he, he and his family own a number of liquor stores in the area. So he has a lot of familial, familial support for staffing, et cetera. He's planning on working at least forty hours a week on the premises. And he is currently tips trained. He will plan to employ two other clerks at the store, both of which are tips trained, and any new employees will also be tips trained. He is well versed in that area. He's not planning on making any interior changes or changes to the hours. And they're also seeking approval of the pledge collateral of the license and inventory as part of their application.
Attorney Levine, did I hear you say that he is manager of record in West Springfield?
Correct.
Okay. Unfortunately, he cannot be the manager of record at two locations.
Right, and he is intending to change the manager of record in West Springfield once, if this is approved and goes through.
Um, I, commissioners, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, we have waited for that to happen first. And then we have made a decision, am I correct?
Yeah.
I, I believe, yes. So, um, I, I believe you have to be relieved completely of your responsibilities in West Springfield before we can go ahead and approve this petition.
Okay, I've not run into this particular situation, I understand. And I will talk to my client about that. If, do you table the application? Or have you in the past approved contingent on the change of manager happening at the other store?
What I can do is, I, I can make a suggestion to the commissioners, and that would be to continue to our problem, I, I don't know how much time you need to address West Springfield. Um, but we can either continue to our next meeting in August or September.
How much time, how much time would he need to straighten out the situation in West Springfield?
I, we can pull together the application very quick. I'm out of town next week is the only problem. I would have to look at the West Springfield schedule and determine when that would be available.
About you say you're going to be gone next week?
Right, I'm just seeing if I can pull up the schedule for West Springfield. I don't know if they have it online. All right, they don't have their sched, they don't have their schedule online. Would it be possible to table to the next meeting? And, well, I, I don't think it will happen by the next meeting, which is, is that the second week in?
The thirteenth, August thirteenth.
I don't think it will happen by then. If we could push it to the, to the next meeting.
So the attorney would be, and that would be August twenty-seventh.
Okay. I would think we could have it in place by then.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to continue the petition for transfer of all alcoholic beverages package store license from Ian Corporation DBA Johnny Mac Liquor to Nash Radhi Krishna, Inc., DBA Johnny Mac Liquor, is located at nineteen forty-nine Wobraham Road. Emil Patel, manager of record, to the August twenty-seventh meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Cade?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Okay. Thank you so much for understanding.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Have a good evening. Next is a petition for all alcoholic beverages, beverage license for Antojos Corp. Corporation DBA Antojos Springfield, located at two sixty-three Hancock Street. Anofo Estrella, manager of record.
Yes, good evening. Josh Goldstein, I'm here, the attorney from Bacon Wilson here on behalf of Antojos Corp. If it's okay with the commission, I'll just kind of dive into my discussion and then open up for questions.
Yes.
Um, so again, just to reiterate, I'm along with the proposed manager of record, Anofo Estrella. He's present with me today. Antojos has been, has been open and operating at two sixty-three Hancock Street since March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. It's a restaurant and store specializing in the sale of frozen foods, desserts and beverages, such as crepes, acai bowls, milkshakes, frozen yogurts, smoothies and so forth. The applicant desires to incorporate alcoholic beverages into its existing theme by giving customers twenty-one years of age and older the opportunity to add alcohol into the flavorful beverages that they offer for sale. This, this business concept is kind of a new and up and coming concept in, in many surrounding cities and bigger cities. Of course, all ownership and employees will be tip certified. The manager, the manager of record and ownership group is already tip certified or serve safe certified and properly trained in the sale and service of alcoholic beverages. And of course, only employees over the age of eighteen and who are tip certified will sell and serve alcohol at the premises if we are approved. Further, all customers who desire to purchase alcohol at the premises will first have their IDs examined by the employee serving the alcohol and then validated through an ID scanner. I've always advised, I've advised even to, you know, always err on the side of caution with selling and serving alcoholic beverages to customers, you know, such as to never serve to a customer who may be, you know, too intoxicated or, you know, never accept an ID, whether fraud, you know, whether it's believed to be fraudulent or expired. Next, so the building is located in a smaller commercial plaza that includes other commercial businesses with no direct residential abutters. It's a small space consisting of approximately four, one thousand four hundred twenty-eight square feet. There will be no exterior banners, streamers or other promotional materials advertising the sale of alcoholic beverages at the property. Antojos' hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from nine A M. to eleven P M. So it's not necessarily a late night spot, like a bar, which may have a tendency to create excess noise and disturbances to the community. And the total occupancy is only fifteen. As a result, it's not an overly busy establishment that will create a lot of noise, traffic or disturbances to the community. In addition, the license premises has a, a lot of parking with fifteen plus parking spaces located on the front side and back of the premises, as well as adequate dumpsters located behind the establishment for the removal of trash. Um, there is a food truck near the premises that is not affiliated with Antojos. When Antojos began to lease the property, they did not want to infringe on their ability to make a living. And the two places seem to really complement one another. Obviously, you can go get tacos at the food truck and then go in for a sweeter treat at Antojos. Um, we did meet with the Old, Old Hill Neighborhood Council on July ninth and the planning board on July sixteenth. The planning board recommended to approve our application with conditions that the hours of operation remain the same and there be no exterior advertising materials, which was included in our application, that there would not be. The Old Hill Neighborhood Council denied to support this endeavor based on three factors. The first being that Antojos has only been open for three months. However, I mean, now we are approaching four months, which, and, I mean, I think most of the time, some of the, you know, liquor license applicants haven't been open at all and are waiting for their liquor license to open the business. So I mean, we actually viewed that, you know, their success and, and business operations these four, these four months as a positive factor. And second, they, they noted that there is no guaranteed method of assuring that there is, will be no underage purchases of alcohol. Of course, there is never a way to a hundred percent guarantee that, but we believe our two-step validation process is a very strong method. Lastly, they noted that patrons do have the ability to take alcoholic beverages to go. As of May first, two thousand and twenty-four, establishments licensed for on-premise alcohol sales may sell mixed drinks for off-premises consumption under certain conditions. Obviously, if that was a route they did want to pursue, they would make sure to fulfill the conditions, which are, of course, that the customer is over the age of twenty-one. The alcoholic beverages are in a sealed container and are bought in connection with a food purchase with a limitation of sixty-four ounces. And they must be, mixed drinks must be transported in a trunk or non-passenger area of a motor vehicle. Naturally, Antojos fully intends to comply with these requirements. The, just to end it up, the two owners are residents of Springfield themselves and are very excited for this new opportunity and sincerely care about the safety of this community. They understand that being the holder of a liquor license is a significant privilege and not a right. I truly believe in, in my discussions with Anofo that they, you know, have earned their right and, and deserve a chance to prove to the commission that it has the ability to safely and serve alcoholic beverages to its customers and continue to be a great addition to the neighborhood. And as such, we respectfully request that the license commission approve this application.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
It's not a question, but a comment. We did receive the letter from the Old Neighborhood Council. And normally, I know that we take their recommendation pretty seriously. However, we don't necessarily need their recommendation, but we oftentimes, since historically, we've always respected their recommendation. So I would perhaps would like to, this is my guess, my observation, and what I would probably would like to do is have the Old Neighborhood Council come in to us and explain exactly their concerns.
Commissioner Cade, I can tell you, I am in room two oh five in City Hall with public access, and no, no one is here.
No one's there, okay.
Commissioner Cade, were you suggesting that we ask then the neighborhood, the Old Hill Neighborhood Council to come in? Or were you hoping they were here today?
Well, I would thought, I thought that someone at least might have been here to represent the council since they are in opposition. And the letter indicated that there were several, even city officials, who were not, who were opposed to this. I think it mentioned Ward Four City Councilor Marlo Brown, and there was Barbara Gresham, school committee person. And there was also state representative Bud Williams as well, I think. That's his district, eleven Hamden District.
Commissioner Cade, would you like to read that letter into the record?
I I think I have the topic here. Let me see if I can pull that up. A second. Okay, here it is. It's stated July twenty-second, City of Springfield Liquor Commission, the License Commission, thirty-fourth Street, regarding all alcohol beverages liquor license to the members of the Liquor License Commission Board. On behalf of the Old Hill Neighborhood Council Board, we would like to deny our support for this endeavor. Please allow this letter to serve as our denial for Antojos Corporation Springfield requests for an on-premises all alcohol beverages liquor license for the premises located at two sixty-three Hancock Street, Springfield, Mass. After consulting with neighborhood residents and business owners, we have determined this to not be feasible project, and we are not in support of this time. We acknowledge a need for local grassroots business to grow and flourish. However, after only been in business for three months, patrons allowed to take alcohol drinks to leave and not a guaranteed method or assuring no one underage purchases alcohol has not proven to be a vested business within our neighborhood track. Besides the four mentioned entities above, Ward Four City Councilor Marlo Brown, Ward Five City Councilor LeVar Click Bruce, the eleven Hamden District Representative Bud L. Williams are all in opposition. The N double A C P located on Alder Street expresses opposition as well. Therefore, we are not in support for an all alcohol beverage liquor license for the premises located at two sixty-three Hancock Street at this present time. Sincerely. And that's Barbara Gresham, Board President.
Thank you, Commissioner Cade.
No problem.
But we didn't get any letters from Bud Williams and anybody else in the council who's opposed of this, did we?
Not that I'm aware of.
So they didn't submit a, a letter of opposement to be landed in record of oppose. So, okay, that's good to hear.
May I say something? I, I don't know if we're allowed to talk.
Of course.
Yeah.
Who, who made this be?
I'm Anul Fastraya. I'm the owner of the property that we're speaking about right now.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't know a lot about the, the coatings you guys were talking about, but Marlo Brown, that council, he has been to my business. So it's, it's a little weird that he's opposing to this petition. I'm thirty years old. I come from New York with a, with a mindset, you know, a good idea. Um, I feel like there was a car wash there where people used to sleep in the streets. I'm cleaning up the area. I'm giving a lot of employments. Um, thanks to my business, there's been over three hundred thousand people, not three thousand, not three hundred, over three hundred thousand people watching Springfield because of my business. I approve of it, social medias, you know, what I've done is for the community. I'm not going to sell alcohol. Like, if you come in and you ask for a beer, I'm not selling a beer. I'm putting alcohol into the theme of my business. If you come asking for a bottle, I am not selling you a bottle. So my concept is not to get people drunk. Um, it just, that was what I wanted to explain, because a lot of people thinks that I'm just going to sell alcohol, I want to sell bottles and serve, you know, hard liquor. It's not, you know, it's, it's just going into the theme that I already, I already have.
Okay, so let me ask you a question, because apparently because the Upper Hill Council and none of these city councilmen or Bud Williams, any of them, took the time to, to come in front of us of their, your opposition. What did the council, city council say to you of their opposition? What exactly were their words?
You didn't go before the city council.
I mean, the
The Old Hill Council?
I mean, the neighborhood council, I'm sorry, the neighborhood council.
It was really, I mean, it was those three main points that they hit. That's kind of, that, and it was kind of the same discussion in our meeting. I know multiple of the, of their board members had been to, been to Antojos, has really loved it, like, loved the addition, love it as an addition to the neighborhood. They were just skeptical. And one thing they did bring up is that there used to be a bar nearby, and that, I think, created some disturbances. But I think, you know, as I mentioned earlier, this isn't a bar that's going to be late night creating this similar noise and, and A bar that's gonna be late night creating this, the, the similar noise and, and disturbances. Um, but besides that, it was just the three factors they, they really spoke of, um.
I'm familiar with the area and I'm not familiar with the bar, uh, being in that location, if it's.
Not the exact.
Yeah, it must have been the years ago. But I've been through the area and I agree with the owner that he has cleaned up the location. It looks really nice in that area. Uh, I think you've done a great job in doing that.
Thank you, sir.
My only opposition would be is just that uh, the council is not satisfied and I would like to know specifically. I know you noted three items here, but is there something else? Do they need more time for you? See if you can uh, continue to do the work that you're doing. Uh, that's just my issue. I don't know with the other council, uh. The other commissioners think, but that's just how I'm thinking about it. Is there something that we don't know or?
And it, it, it's, it's my, that's why I asked a question. To him, uh, what did they say to him? Because, um, and I have to uh, say if, if. If the uh, there was so much in opposition, I think they should have. Maybe took the time and come in front of us today of the opposition. Uh, we made it available in uh. In city hall to do so as well in room two oh four, am I correct, Mr. Turner Schmidt?
You are correct, except it's room two oh five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, I just wanna be accurate on the record in case.
So.
Am I allowed to speak?
Um, so, um. So, uh, it's, as soon as I get done, that person can chime in, but uh. I, I just feel that if they feel that strong of opposition, I think they should have taken the time. To come in front of us, uh, not based on one letter. If these other city councilmen and state reps and stuff like that are, are in opposition. Uh, maybe they should have took the time and uh, present themselves, so. Putting it in, put it in somebody else's letter, I, I, I just, I, I don't know, it's. It just doesn't sit well with me.
Right. You're absolutely right. I agree with you. Um. Uh, I believe it was Ms. Marg- Marguerite wanted to speak.
Yes, yes, I.
Can you turn your camera on, please?
Absolutely. Hi, my name is Margie Foster Franklin. I do not live near there. Um, but I know there is a school down the street from there as well. My concern with this place, um, being there, um. I heard him say, or someone say that the consumption of alcohol will be allowed to exit the building. Then that I would totally be against. I'm also against the fact that there's already a food truck there. It's near a rotary, which is very busy, and there's also another, um, bu- another business. Um, fo- Family Dollar is right there. For the food truck, I don't think should be there. I just think it's gonna make it even crowded. If you look on the Google map, it doesn't show the food truck. It only shows Dunkin' Donuts and the gas station as well as Family Dollar. So I'm trying to figure out where's the twenty one spaces for parking would be. Because of course, people would need to park if they're gonna have their cars and not everyone parks, but. You wanna make it safe for people walking as well as for people driving. Um, and my, again, my other concern is the fact that I thought I heard someone say that he was going to be allowed. They were gonna be allowed to carry it out. I think that's a no, so I would be against that totally.
Right.
And also I want to say that, um, people coming in there, I just came from down there and all the doors were locked and I was not able to get in. At city hall.
City hall?
Yes. There, and I was there way before five thirty and they were locked. So, how can someone come down if the doors are locked?
Okay, I think we can make a note of that and look into that.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting question, um, and I'm sorry to hear that. I as, I think the back door is probably open, um, but I assume you love, it's not, okay. All right, we'll address that in the future and I'm, I'm sorry that that happened to you.
Yeah, most definitely. Um, I, I, I do agree and I am concerned with the whole. Um, you know, taking these um, alcoholic beverages out. Of the establishment, that is a concern for, for me as well. Um, you know, not only the school that is there, there's other um, churches in the area. Um, but just the fact of, you know, my concern is. Bringing these alcoholic beverages outside, you know, um, to go. And I do understand that, you know, the laws and, and, and all that, but is, I'm just really concerned. About it and, and that's just me. There's the other commissioners.
All right, so I have a question. What's the difference between going into a liquor store? Or a gas station, buying a beer, what makes you think they're not gonna open that beer, leaving the, the property? Uh, that's just, you know, like, like I, I said, I respect everybody's decisions today, but I come from a city where. Um. Is way, way more corrupted than here. So for me to come and bring an idea that is only elevating Springfield. I'm not downgrading it. It's, it's, it feels a little harsh that, you know, if y'all really sit back and really think about it. All I've done is positive, so adding alcohol is not gonna be negative. You go to a liquor store, that's all they do. They, as soon as they leave from a property, they're gonna open a bottle in their vehicle or wherever they're gonna do it, you know what I'm saying? I'm not. Like I said, I'm gonna respect your decisions, but it's just, it's logic, like. You go to a liquor store, you leave, you go to a gas station, you leave. You don't know what they do with that, with that liquor. If you guys tell me my liquor has to be sealed, I'll find a way to seal it. Once they leave my property, it's up to them, but it's the same concept. So it's a little harsh that if I get denied today over that. You guys giving it to liquor stores and gas stations and. You know, that's just my opinion. I respect you guys. Thank you for your time.
Right, and we're, we're entitled to our own opinions as, as well.
Yeah.
Um, so I appreciate you, um, understanding that. Um, at no point are we saying that that's a reason for a denial. I'm just. Expressing how I feel about it. I do understand what you're saying, but you are not, you know, you're, you're not asking for a package store. Um, license. Um, so again, my concern is. You know, i- i- are these people coming in just, you know, to get something to eat and. Take that drink with them, or are they just gonna come in and buy a drink and go?
The, the law requires them to buy food with the drink.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
Attorney goes in, could you uh, uh, refresh my memory again? And I know it was just two, three minutes ago and I apologize for that.
Yeah.
How's the operation going? Supposed to be again?
If, if, uh, the requirements of, to take alcohol, it'll go?
Uh, his operation. Uh, if a person goes in there to buy alcohol, what is it? It, that is gonna be closed, coming out, sealed?
Yeah, so it has to be in a sealed container that can't be uh, greater than sixty four ounces. And they will have to purchase food along with it.
Right, so the food will be considered the sweet stuff that he has, the ice cream or milkshake, whatever it is?
Uh, and, and he has stuff like crepes and, and, and other foods like that.
So is they buy the alcohol, does he pour it into? Those other items or they take it out two separate units?
Two separate units. It would be like a sealed with the, with the, with the plastic top on it sealing like a, almost like a pina colada, for example. Or something like that, um. It would, it would just be adding it to the beverages, pina coladas, strawberry smoothies, kinda stuff like that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, is there possibly that I could just make a recommendation? That uh, since this is a fairly new concept for us as well. And there might have been people who could not get in, uh, today as she indicated that the doors were locked. Is that we continue this, uh, to get more feedback? And uh, more information to our next meeting.
Yeah. Um.
Uh, I'm just asking.
Would you like, would you like to make that a motion?
Yes, but I wanted to, yes, uh, run it by the, uh, other commissioners to see how they felt about that recommendation.
Uh, uh, Andrew, uh, Commissioner Kate, I, I agree with you. I think, uh, since we did. Even if we had one person who wanted to come in. In opposition and I, i- i- it. With that one person could have been another two other people who wanted to come in and either oppose or, 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 or for it. But the doors are locked, so we didn't give that party enough, uh, an opportunity to do that, so. I, if you make that motion, I'd be glad to second that and I think we should give people the opportunity. And also give other people a, an opportunity to, because like you said, this is a different concept. We still. Grasping how this operates and stuff like that and to be fair to the gentleman. I think we should give that gentleman a, a fair. Fair in which we always do, give a fair hearing, but give a, a, a ample time and stuff to make this happen. Um. Uh, I, so if you would like to make that motion, I, I'd be glad to uh, second that and move forward.
Could I, could I just ask one question? Mr., Mr. Estralla, what are your hours of operation?
Nine AM to eleven PM, Monday to Monday.
Monday to Mon- Monday to Sunday, okay. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to make that a motion that we continue this until our next meeting.
Um, and that would be August thirteenth.
August thirteenth, right.
Okay, um, Commissioner Kane.
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Mr. Estralla, what I would suggest is that perhaps you can speak to some of your, um. Customers and, you know, have people come in and, and speak on your behalf, um. And, you know, that might help as well. Okay?
Um, how, how would I, how would I do this though? So my lawyer, I just give him the information of the.
Um. Yeah, we can have them, you know, join the Zoom meeting or come to city hall and speak on your behalf and we'll, we'll touch base more about that off. When or off Zoom.
Okay, we'll see you on August thirteenth.
Thank you all for your time.
Next item on the agenda is an informational hearing for Power Entertainment LLC DBA Dewey's Jazz Lounge. Located at two thirty two Wordington Street. Kenneth Lumpkin, manager of record, and this is for review of the liquor license and outstanding taxes.
Hello, how we doing?
Good Kenny, can you turn your camera?
Yeah, I can. I'm, I'm just, I'm uh, in a car right now, but I.
Thank you.
How we doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm well.
Kenny, could you give us an update as to what's going on?
With what?
The license we were supposed to review today. Um, you know, what, I, I know you were looking to, to, for another case.
Yeah, so still looking. I have a few uh, LOIs that I've sent out to properties, waiting to hear back. Uh, I got traction from a property near MGM. I would, uh, happy to email you guys that LOI if needed. I'd prefer, given the circumstances of why I'm not at two thirty two anymore. I'd prefer to keep the addresses and the names of, of suitors as confidential as possible, seeing. What I've already been dealing with previously. But I'm happy to email that over to you guys and not necessarily discuss it here if possible.
Okay.
Uh, Kenny, Kenny, what is, how's it look in that future spot for you? How, how's it look? How does it look? What's the prospect of that potentially happening? How soon?
Seeing that it's still at the stage of an LOI and then we need to get to negotiating at least. I would hate to give you a timeline on it, cause it's not, it's not necessarily within my control.
Kenny, what, what kinda uh, time would you be looking for? I, I, I think is what the commission's really trying to find out.
Yeah, and that's once again, it's a, it's a tough call, right? It's, uh, we're what, two months out from our last, three months after the last time we spoke. I obviously, you know, had to close that out and get everything out of there, so that took up about sixty days. So it's really been the last thirty days that I've been able to get some traction and I've been able to get some, so maybe. If we follow up in another three months, I would be at, if not, have a signed lease. And or another property secured. We were able to uh, sell the property over at All American, so. We have a few things to figure out. All American sold last week, so that's really, that was a curve ball to figure out what we can or want to do.
Okay.
Thanks, Kenny.
Thank you guys.
How the, um. How does the commissioner, um, feel about his, um. Petition for another three months?
Um. I think it's a. Fair request. And being the fact that Kenny's been a. A long time established owner in this area and that's in the city of Springfield, so. I think it's a fair request. So.
I agree, uh, with the commissioner. That it's not easy, uh, you know, to lock up and down these days. Uh, so three months is uh, definitely fair. I think three months is very fair.
I, I'm in agreement as well, considering the circumstances that he has faced in the past, absolutely.
So, um, John, do you wanna make that motion or you'd like me to make that motion?
He sounds so elegant while doing it. Please, please, continue.
I like. Um, I'd like to make a motion to, um. Continue the Power Entertainment LLC DBA Dewey's Jazz Lounge located at two thirty two Wordington Street. Kenneth Lumpkin, manager of record for the review of the liquor license and outstanding taxes. Um, for another three months. Um, that would be.
October?
October. The meeting in October, October.
It, it, yeah, it's the eighth and the twenty second.
The eighth, October eighth. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, multiple seconds. Commissioner Kane?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Hey, good luck, Kenny.
Thank you guys. I'll see you in October.
Yeah, have a good night. Thank you.
Good care, bye bye.
Next item on the agenda is Orchard Card Company Inc., DBA Orchard Card Company Inc. Located at four twenty one Main Street Edwards Stufelsoy. Manager of record and this is regarding tax issues and the special permit and licensing. Mister Edward? We can't hear you, sir. We can't, still can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Adam Clerk, do you want to skip, uh, Orchard and we'll do Ziggy's and we can circle back and maybe he'll be
Okay.
Possible by then.
Okay, can you try and figure it out and we're just going to move on to the next and we'll come back to you. So try to figure out your volume situation. Okay? Next item on the agenda is Ziggy's Jerk Center located at four thirty-six Boston Road. Oral Davey, manager of record is, um, regarding the twenty twenty-five common vehicle and entertainment licenses. Um, presently, um, he does not have a certificate of occupancy, um, due to the issues um, going on in the building.
I can report that, uh, the building department actually issued a cease and desist to Ziggy's on June thirteenth. And then they were to go back out, uh, to re-inspect, uh, on June eleventh. Um, so, uh, they, they definitely are not in a position where they should be operating, um, so, uh, if, uh, they could tell us where they are, that'd be helpful.
Anybody here for Ziggy's? No. Um, I don't think there was anybody here for Ziggy's last meeting either, am I right?
I think you're right.
Okay, so, um, so they do have a license for Tony Smith?
No, they, they, uh, they don't have a, um, an occupancy permit, so no.
Okay. Um, I, I don't know, what does the, the commission want to do? I mean, this is the second time.
Yeah, this, we've been dealing with this for a while.
Right, that he hasn't been here, doesn't seem like it's important enough to, to him or them, um. And, um, obviously, I, I believe nothing has happened with the repairs to the establishment, so, um, how does the board feel? Uh, would you like to move forward?
What can we do with this? How can we?
It, it's only on for an informational hearing, um, Commissioner Ramirez, so there's not really anything that we can do but gather information today. He's not licensed, so it's not like we can put it on for a pre-hearing conference and, and, you know, punish him on the license. So I think continued cease and desists and moderating the property to make sure that, um, he's not operating without a license is, is really what we can do. And that's really my office, but.
Yeah.
So we, we don't make a, we don't make a motion or vote or anything. Okay.
I don't think anything's necessary and that, you know, that'll be on my to-do list and, um, the, uh, we can go back to Orchard and hopefully Edward's here.
Okay. Edward, are you, can you hear us?
Uh, I believe so. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We now, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
Awesome. Hold on a second, please.
Yes.
All right, awesome. Thank you for waiting. I appreciate that.
Sir, can you give us an update with, um, what's going on in regards, in regard to the, um, issue with the taxes and the special permit licensing?
Uh, yes, um, I work with the court enforcement, the planning department with the city. The taxes almost paid off. It was a big amount and I think the balance is like, uh, uh, around, uh, I'm on the business plan, I mean, I'm payment plan, sorry. And, um, and it was, uh, it was a balance, small balance left probably around, uh, ten percent. That's all, and, um, I work with, uh, with the court enforcement, all those issues been cleared and, um, and, uh, basically that's all they, they tell me I can get, um, um, license.
Do, do you have a special permit?
Special permit, uh, I, I work with, uh, with, uh, with the planning department, his application, and they told me that next meeting will be, will be like, uh, in September, but, uh, it's possible to, to like, uh, do it earlier because I need revenue. I need, uh, the tax bill came already for August first and I have to pay for two lots. I need income.
We, we don't control the special permit, sir, so I mean, but you're telling me you don't have one yet?
Uh, well, it's, who's supposed to like, uh, they give me spe- special permit? Can you fill me in, please? Make sure I, I'm doing everything correct?
We, we've talked about this before and I've told you on the record, it's the city council.
City councillor and, um, and I the city councillor, when, when I can, uh, contact city councillor and, uh, and when is it going to be next?
Edward, the time to figure this out is not during the meeting when we're all sitting here. The time to figure that out is, you know, in the months between the meeting to ge- to get everything in order and you know, you've received three cease and desists, um, from my office since February twenty-seventh. We're now at July twenty-third, um, and you don't have everything in order. So the, the fact that you don't have revenue is, is not on this commission. So how are you asking for, are you asking for more time to get things in order? And then the commissioners?
I believe so. I, I believe so, yes. And, uh, can you guide me, um, where I have to go now?
In between the meetings, you, you have to make phone calls. It's, it's your job to get yourself licensed. Um, you know, we can't walk you through it, uh, during a public hearing.
Uh, because I have a hearing, uh, the, here at the court and all clear and they tell me I can go get the license.
But you don't have a special permit? Okay, I, I, I you know, un- unless you have additional in- information, I, I think, I think we have what we need.
Pardon me?
I, I, I think you've, you've answered all our questions. You don't, you don't have a special permit and you still owe taxes and that, that's what we were asking.
Yeah, but, but taxes on, uh, uh, at the payment plan, agreement with the city and, uh, with revenue and, uh, and like I said, I'm ahead of the payments. If I knew, I, I have to pay the taxes on the payment plan and it's, uh, to twenty twenty-seven. And I could probably, and I paid off sooner because, uh, I told him gonna pay the interest rate. But from my understanding of, uh, the
Edward. You do not have a special permit, so y- y- you can't operate. It, it, that's, it's so, uh, no matter what your payment plan is with the taxes, if you're telling me you don't have the special permit yet, you can't operate.
I, I'm not operating. There's no business anyway. And, um, and the thing is, uh, who I have to work with about the special permit? Because, uh, I, I went to like, uh, even a court here and I went there, everything clear. They told me like, I'm upset.
You need to figure this stuff out in between the meetings, okay? Um, and the commission is going to decide whether or not to put this on for a later date or, uh, what they want to do. But we can't have you, um, coming to meetings and asking us what to do. This, that's exactly what you did last time, okay? So, uh, you need to figure this out in between the meetings.
Okay, all right, I'll figure it. I'm gonna work on it tomorrow again and, uh, figure out. And, um, I would like to tell us, uh, reschedule meeting then.
Okay, come. Um, commissioners, how do you feel about another extension or revisiting in a month or two? Or we, do, do we just?
My comment is that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, you were talking. Go on.
No, I was just gonna say, or do we just dismiss it completely and just wait for him to have the special permit? And then request a meeting?
Yeah, uh, my comment would have been, uh, that we, uh, if he does not, uh, have some kind of assistance and trying to get his situation cleared and go to the right people, I would think that we just drop it and wait until he, uh, you know, find someone to get it done for him because I don't think he understands or he's not going to the right place to discuss. We've had this conversation before, a number of times.
Okay.
So, I
Uh, please reschedule. I'm gonna be working on it. I'm gonna take care of it soon as possible.
So I, I concur with Commissioner Cade, uh, he needs to seek, uh, some type of assistance. I think if he was paying attention to the hearing and, and see that, uh, there's, uh, a ton of attorneys out there that can lead him to the right direction, he can seek that. Um, and who knows when they're going to be able to put him on the agenda to be, to be heard in front of the city council. So, I, that's the other issue. Uh, you know, we at the end of July, uh, I don't know what's, you know, what the city council has on the agenda, when they're going to be able to put him on, that's be another question. So, do we continue it for a month, month and a half, two months? I think we just close it, or dismiss it and let him come back to us when he's able to have all that information. Because like I said, we don't know when the city council will be able to put him on the agenda to be heard.
Right.
I agree.
Agreed.
Okay, um, then I'll make a motion to dismiss the, um, Orchard Card Company Inc. DBA Orchard Card Company located at four twenty-one Main Street, um, Edwards Stufelsoy, manager of record, um, until he has obtained the, um, special permit and then can request another meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Cade?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Edward, um, so we're not going to give you another, um, meeting day. You have to figure out how to get to, um, city council, have your meeting. And once you have your special permit, then you can request, um, to come back in front of us, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Um, I'd like to, um, suggest that we go to the final hearing to maybe leave the new business for afterwards. Okay, okay, um, so next item is a section seventy-seven final hearing. Um, for Blaze Restaurant Inc., DBA Island Blaze Restaurant located at seven oh eight Main Street. Um, Guy Seymour, Wilson, manager of record, and we looking for an update as to when when is the grand opening? When is the opening? Anybody here for Blaze Restaurant? No. No, last time he was here, he said he was very close to, to opening. So do we continue until our next hearing? Yes. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to continue the Blaze Restaurant Inc., DBA Island Blaze Restaurant located at seven oh eight Main Street, um, Guy Seymour, Wilson, manager of records, um, to our next meeting on August thirteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cade?
Yes.
Commissioner, the Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Next item is La Suca Huka Lounge, LLC, DBA La Suca Huka located at one Worthington Street. Genesis Pujol, manager of record. Um, DC Genesis. Hi Genesis, how are you?
Hi, I'm good, thank you.
All right, um, so Genesis, we're looking to, um, for you to give us an update. I know that, um, you're not at, um, La Suca anymore.
Yeah, so we're hoping to, um, relocate by next month. So, yeah, like about three to four weeks, um. We're looking at two different places, but we still haven't decided which one we're gonna take, um. But that's where we are right now.
So you haven't made up your mind as to which one of the two places, but you're hoping to be open in four weeks? Is that here, right?
Yeah.
Think realistically, it'll be a little longer than that.
Well, yeah, probably a little longer, yeah, because we have to move everything and organize. Um, but hopefully in like about a month, we'll, we're, we are gonna have the place. But probably we won't open until probably another month.
Okay. Questions from the commissioners? None. Then I'd like to, uh, so, so you, what you're saying is probably a month between the time that you decide who you're going with and then another month to put everything together, so would it be fair to say e- extend it for another, um, three months to give you enough time?
Yeah, that's fine. You have anything in September?
Uh, we do. Give me a second.
For September meetings, I have the tenth and the twenty-fourth, Genesis.
Oh. Let's do the ten.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to continue the final hearing for lo- the section seventy-seven final hearing for La Suca Huka Lounge, LLC. DBA La Suca Huka located at one Worthington Street, Genesis Pujol, manager of record. Is there a second? Commissioner Cade?
Yes.
Commissioner Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
I abstain.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Okay, we'll see you September tenth.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, good luck. Okay. Um, so the next item on the agenda is the, um, new business and that is the new application for outdoor alcoholic beverages service. Um, the, the commissioners have an opportunity to go over and review the, um, the application?
Uh, yes, um. Attorney Smith, um, have you had any feelers on, uh, the, the, the other departments in question on this application? And how they and how they feel about it?
Yes, so they were part and parcel of developing the form and, um, they were all, uh, met with and, and involved. And in fact, you know, Public Works is actually, you know, receiving one of the forms, um, and, uh, so they were very involved. And it's actually their form that we're using for their portion of it.
In which I, I, I find that it was very good that we including other departments in some of these, uh, decisions on, you know, having a, a, approve or disapprove of some of these outside situations. And I, I think, uh, I commend you for that because I commend you for that because I think um. Getting other entities involved and and in in the situation, instead of just basing it on just on us. We don't know what they got going on and they might be able to. Pipe in and said, no, you know, we can't do this, it's too large, it's whatever, it 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 it's gonna impede traffic, it's going to. Cause parking situations, so uh I myself, uh I I like the uh. The application, I I I think it's it's a good one and I I I appreciate that you took the time to develop something like this. And I I'm in favor of it, so it's up to my fellow commissioners and how they feel about it. But I think as I was, I feel as an outstanding job by your part, by yourself, um. Uh, I I. I'm good, I.
I feel I feel the same way, I read it, um. And and it it looks really good, and I do, you know, points you made are um, you know, they're they're valid. Good point. Um, so. Um, uh um Commissioner Kate?
No, I'm just gonna say after all the steps that it takes to complete the application, so we are making the final. Say on this. After we go through the application and. Determine whether we would like to uh say yes or no. So that's, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Okay. Maria?
Yeah, I agree, a lot of time and effort was put into that, obviously, and absolutely, I'm in agreement.
Okay, okay, then um. I'd like to make a motion to approve the new application for outdoor alcoholic beverage services. Commissioner Kate?
Yes.
Commissioner the Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes.
Well, thank you, everyone.
You did a very good job.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a administrative review of incident reports, um so the incident. For Rose. Um. This was an incident on July twelve, twenty twenty five. Um, Officer Anderson, can you? Speak a little bit about the incident?
Yeah, um, so the complainant stated that she attended the. Rose Lounge, um observed a an ex-boyfriend, um. Then the ex-boyfriend left, she then left the establishment. Um, then they had a little altercation. Um, where the complainant then hit the ex-boyfriend and then he. In turn, uh hit her and pushed her to the ground. Uh, she then proceeded to make a report, I think later on in the day at like nine PM, where officers reported to Bay State. Uh, where she sustained like minor injuries, cut scratches to her hands and. Elbows, um I attempted to call her phone, just went till I get disconnected, um. Tone, uh tempted a couple more times. Uh, at the time, I did try to contact Ms. Fiore, the manager of record, um for the establishment, she did not. Respond, I did this week get in touch with her. Um, she stated that the establishment that day was slow. So she said everyone was out and left the the establishment, she closed by twelve thirty.
Okay, but if I understand this correctly. The altercation happened outside the establishment?
Correct.
Do we know where outside the establishment?
No.
So it could have been, it could have been up the street.
Correct, it was very vague.
It could have been in in West Side, it could have been in Aguam.
Right.
So, uh. And then she decided, uh what, maybe eighteen hours, twenty hours later?
Yes, there was a large uh large gap in time for reporting.
So even even with that timeframe, i- i- it stopped telling me anything that had happened inside the establishment. So if us doing anything, I feel anything to Rose. About this or anything, i- it's it's, there's no, there's no evidence that's happening in time. So what I'm saying, so. I I I motion for no action.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kate?
Yes.
Commissioner the Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes. Okay, thank you, Officer Anderson.
No problem.
Okay, then um, do we have anything else that we might want on the agenda? For upcoming meetings? I I I do have a question on pot bellies. Is pot bellies closed?
They're closed.
Okay, did they turn in the the license?
I'll double check, but I I believe they did.
Okay.
Because we talked to them way back when we were doing the late night hearings and um the owner came in and just said, no, we're we're done. So, um and that was a while ago now, but I can double check that for you.
Okay, and I know last meeting I mentioned, um, was it Ducasa? On Y Street, um, do we know if they turned in that license? I know it was a little com-.
I don't wanna misspeak because my memories, but I believe they were vandalized. That's why they're boarded up and they're in the process of getting it repaired.
Okay, cuz I think the last time, the last time before the last time, um that we spoke, um. I think she had closed and sold it to someone else, but the health department. Had gone by and they had a hole in the roof. Um. That was leaking into the kitchen. So, um. And we only found out because the new owner had gone to to the license office. So um I think we were asking. For the licensee to come in and let us know. Why the transfer didn't take place, if there was gonna be a transfer, and if not, then why, you know, she didn't. Um, turn in the the license.
Okay, so I'll look into that and we will bring them in.
Okay.
Um. They are, yeah, they were, they were, we were just there doing something for our office and they were. Like, looked like they were renovating the outside, I don't know what the actual business was, but they were renovating the outside or painting, I don't know what they're doing. But closed.
So so he may be, he may be fixing.
Yes.
The 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 place, okay, all right, thank you. Um, well, i- if no one.
What, um. May I ask, uh in September, our meeting, uh second meeting September, what date is that?
The twenty four.
So.
Are you gonna be out of town?
If you consider West Springfield out of town.
You will be wearing your other hat.
Yeah. Yes, it's and and as we're getting ready for it, it's gonna be a nice, busy. Busy, uh.
Big year.
Yes, we have uh, we have some good entertainment coming. Uh, we have some new food come uh vendors and stuff like that, things are getting moved around. So, uh uh. It's gonna be a busy, uh.
Yeah.
Good.
Uh, will the construction be done?
No, they're gonna hold off, they're gonna hold off on it, I uh, uh and start right back up in the.
Oh, okay, okay, I was wondering where they're gonna finish, yeah.
They actually told us that doesn't look like to be done till spring of twenty seven.
Wow. That's crazy.
So I actually find, I find another way to get home because. I feel that I'm gonna lose an axle or something like that out of my car going up and down that shit.
Yeah.
Right.
I think my brakes or something's gonna, it just.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Something's gonna give. Okay, anything else? No. Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at six forty seven PM. There's a second?
Second.
Commissioner um Kate?
Yes.
Commissioner the Angel Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza, yes.